Okay. Good evening, we will open the May 2nd, 2017, 2017 zoning board of appeals meeting. My name is Jim Went, I'm the chairman, I will let the other members identify themselves from the records starting to my right.
Andrew Barone, alternate.
Ryan Condon, alternate.
Ben Mayne, commission.
Mike Pinto, alternate.
Tom Panini, member.
Marion Callow, member.
Robert Saraklin, member.
Okay, we are not going to read the notice of public hearing, this is a continuation of a hearing that was opened on our March meeting, on March the 7th. There was some additional information requested at that time, so we'll let the applicant come on up and present the new information, and we'll start with that, and we'll let the board answer any additional questions.
Good evening, my name is John Madzol, I'm the architect for Mr. Silva, John II, who is attorney representing Mr. Silva. And at the previous meeting, we were asked to put together a set of drawing plans and drawings from the building, so everybody can see what the spaces entailed inside the house. And I have to say, oh, I think of the situation that, you know, you can't judge a book by the cover, so, we have a exterior, I have the photographs up there, but what I did was, these are the colors for where you took. So this is what we have, I mean, the property, it's built around the house, it's all black and white.
That is black and white.
And you can see what the exterior of the property is like, the houses are very well constructed, the exterior is, for all intents and purposes, very new, the decks are constructed of all pressure-treated lumber, sizes are all adequate for structural stability. And then, we have the decks, as you see, we have this walkway in the rear, which is one of the questions of setbacks, backside, which is enabled from the kitchen, we have this slight ramp up the side, which also leads out of that kitchen area and down inside the house. And on this one here, we have, as you say, we have the front elevations, the entry for the site, the deck that's on the west side there, and this is the front of the house, being the south side. You can see that the exterior, I mean, the site itself, it's got a lot of construction materials around, it's got a site that's full of dirt, the driveway is, it's a mudhole when it rains, and after the snow melting this year, so that is something that, as I say, is just, you know, that's the cover, and it's not very well representative of what's inside the house. Residence is, it's got two bedrooms in the original section, which the original section is about 24 by 25 feet dimension, that's on the right side, and basement is the finished basement.
This is the upper floor?
There's the first floor, that's, okay, so we have two bedrooms on the right side, with a bathroom, kitchen.
Sorry.
And then we have the living dining area, section to the left, which is the master bedroom, is a new, new piece of construction that was, I don't know, built by the previous owner, and it's got two closets, and it has a fully wall picture bathroom, four picture bathroom, and then off that is the deck, 24 by 24 deck. As I said, that house inside is pristine, I mean, the construction is as solid as anything we build today. You have a little sheet rock, you have hardwood floors, tile in the bathrooms, granted, the kitchen is rather small, because we can see, here you have just a very small structure. But Mr. Silva has two children, and his wife and himself, and four of them live on the upstairs, and downstairs is completely finished, also, the piece on the right was the original part of the house, you've got a bathroom down here, you've got your washer dryer, and then you have what they might call a playroom for the children. There is an area that has a sink and a cabinet, refrigerator, but does not have any cooking facilities downstairs, so it's not a kitchen, as we say. And then on the left side, is that new addition, which is really basically a family room, it's got an eight-foot ceiling, the undersection on the right has a six-foot-eight ceiling, as I say, they're all finished, they're all sheet rocked, tile floor throughout the bottom level, and as I said, the construction is as solid as you're gonna find anywhere. I think, hopefully, I met the charge that was directed with last month to put the plans together, and the elevations of this are here, that we have up there, so if there are any questions, we will have to.
Any questions? Dominic?
As I recall, I think the charge that we gave you was to find out if there was a building permit obtained?
No.
Well, those are the things we wanted to know, was an inspection of the premises built by the previous owner, was it inspected?
No.
How do we know what's in there? Did you do an investigation?
Yeah, I did my own investigation inside the house.
What did you find out?
I was in the attic.
Is there insulation in there?
Yes, there is, there's insulation in the attics, there's insulation in the basement, there's, the framing members can be seen, there's access in the basement, I saw the framing members there.
Did you get a C O?
No.
No.
So we're trying to get.
We discussed that earlier, in the previous meeting. And we think we came into the agreement that the preliminary investigation, per your request actually, was to get you a floor plan drawing, get you the site plan, or site elevation pictures, then we said, at that point, you know, obviously, in front of the board, is the lot coverage variance, as well as the variance of the structure, but we already knew that the building department had already informed us, and I believe Mr. Agresta, that no, there was no inspection, in fact, there was no inspection since the time the residence was ever built, and I think that was 1940 something, so there's nothing on the books on it. So from there, what we agreed, I believe, if my memory serves me correct, in the event, we said we'd be more happy to comply, Mr. Silva as well, to then go through the motions with the building department, and any other agency that needed to.
Now, look, let me go back a little bit, all right? Everybody was trying to cooperate and extend, and trying to pass this thing along, without the town being liable.
Uh huh.
Okay, so with that in mind, I think you bought a house that had certain, what, as an attorney? It didn't meet certain requirements according to the town regulations, am I right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's really a civil matter that should have been going back, now we're trying to approve it, and we like to know, did the construction, without the permit and without any inspection, meet, does it meet the town regulations? And you've gotta answer that.
Well, it meets every aspect of that house, as I said, I was up in the attic, I saw the roof framing, I saw the ceiling joints, it was on the first floor, I saw the floor beams, the spans are adequate for the timbers that are in there.
Was there electrical work, was there electrical work being done?
Please?
Was electrical work being done?
Was there electrical, yes, there was electric work, and all the outlets are in the proper locations, has it been tested? No, we haven't tested it, we have to bring it out.
Let me ask this question, if this progressed to the point, obviously you can't apply for building permit unless you resolve zoning.
Correct.
If you were to apply for zoning, let's just say for the sake of argument that that occurs, and tomorrow you apply for building permit, in your professional opinion as an architect, do you think it would pass muster and be able to obtain a building permit and a certificate of occupancy, as it's presently constructed?
I would say everything would pass it, the only thing we'd probably have to do is get an electrical test on the building to check out all the circuit. Other than that, construction of it, I have no problems.
It's all fully enclosed, sheet rocked, so would an inspector be able to do a framing inspection on the addition without having to dismantle anything for?
Well, you know, how, as I said, the original portion of the house, the ceiling is all open over the furnace and the hot water heater, so you can see, you can see the timbers in there.
All right, so in your opinion, if a permit were to be applied for, you believe it would be able to be obtained, subject to any, whatever inspection result may occur at that point?
The electrical is probably the biggest unknown that would have to be tested.
What about the plumbing?
Plumbing? Well, I'm sure the plumbing's working pretty well, if everybody's been using the city house for, I don't know, you wanted the water test, you wanted to test to be the plug up, everything.
And Mr. Silva, I mean, the health department, did have the tank pumped, you know, previously, and was able to produce their receipts and inform the health department.
But now it's a two-bedroom, as opposed to one, is?
It's a three-bedroom.
It's a three-bedroom. The second bathroom, and the additional occupants, is the tank gonna be sustainable?
Well, that's, that's the next phase, I mean, I just like what Colin put the carpet for the horses here, because we have to get your approval first before we can move any further, and you could say, you know, yes, guys, go ahead, and you can get the approval from health, wetlands, building, like, whatever is involved, that's the next focus.
I have a problem in that, when we met last, you told us that those two big addition areas were two playrooms, and we said to you, two big areas for playrooms, you have a small little house, and all this area is a playroom, and you said yes, well, it turns out that that wasn't true, that one of those areas was this master bedroom.
Well, I will qualify that by saying, the last time you asked me, I said I had nothing in the house.
And you came before us as the architect, and you had never even been in the house.
I came before you, trying to resolve the P and Z problem, not trying to resolve the architecture of the house, or the structure of the house, we hadn't gotten that far. I said, how can Mr. Silva invest all that money in that if you people just said, hey, forget it, Mr. Silva, there's nothing we can do for you.
Okay, so now what we're looking at, as we were told, it was a three-bedroom house within this small old area, which it wasn't, now it's a three-bedroom house, but what concerns me is when you look downstairs into the basement, with the full bathroom downstairs, and the refrigerant.
It looks like it, it's working one at a time.
The full bathroom, the refrigerator, the sink, and a nice little space to stick in a stove, is this really gonna be a four-bedroom house, or is it gonna be an accessory apartment? I mean, I'm looking at something that, if we approve, it's going to be a lot of problems because your septic system may have been pumped, but that's a very small lot that has wetlands on it, and you start adding a three, or possibly four-bedroom use with three full baths, you know, I'm afraid we're gonna be asking, looking at problems in the future.
As you have in your file, there's a health department letter back in, I think, October 2016, which says that the septic is unresolved, that health department does not know what the accuracy of the septic system, much less how many bedrooms could handle, and I don't think they've ever seen these floor plans, and I do echo this, full bath and kitchenette or whatever down here is a very questionable item.
I think that's one of the reasons why we asked for pictures of the downstairs, the inside, and we don't have them, but we do see that there's a bathroom, refrigerator, and it's an apartment, a accessory apartment, it seems to be, but no question of that, and I know we specifically asked for that because we wanted to see what we're looking at.
Especially since the whole place is, the basement is completely finished, with ceramic tile floors through the whole basement, which you're not normally doing in a basement, you have a cement floor.
Well, I don't know with that, I mean, I can appreciate what you're coming up with, I'd, you know, to say what kind of floor covering someone puts on a basement, I'd have to have a mix.
Well, it's a finished area, finished and suitable for living space, not just a basement where you store things.
I think the other point of that, if you came in with a permit for all this, I'm not sure your septic system, one, can handle that, two, it would have, again, raised the specter of this being an accessory apartment, which wouldn't comply either, because I doubt it's gonna meet the dimensional requirements for that, and it's certainly not gonna qualify for a four-bedroom house.
Well, first of all, I don't even think it has the proper finessration for an apartment downstairs.
Well, we've seen that the record is that permits aren't that important, so.
Yeah, that was a previous owner's.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you can't, you can't correct that Mr. Silva was trying to, was trying to clean this up, he bought it, I would buy it, bought it through a friend, no inspections, no anything, you know, so.
It's not a friend then, if he didn't get the permit, right?
An acquaintance.
You can't sit here and argue that.
Are there any interior pictures available?
No.
Okay.
Just floor plans, which.
Sheet rock, well, sheet rock ceiling. Let's get your pictures, but I'm not gonna really tell you anything more than, but, you know, I'm describing to you. It's finished space. A six-foot-eight ceiling. The other left side, the ceiling, is that an eight-foot ceiling?
I have a question?
Yes.
Is any of the interior of the house actually going into the variances you're requesting? Or no?
Yes.
All the outdoor patios?
This whole section here?
That was that previous, it used to be the screen porch area.
Oh, okay, that's right, sorry, two months ago, and then it was built?
Yeah, it was built, and then it was, it was enclosed on the top, on the first floor.
And was that built by Mr. Silva, or no? It was built by his friend?
By his friend. The enclosed screen porch, from, I think, even the drawings we have, or the picture we have of the original property, was there from the date of original construction.
Okay.
Then, the previous owner enclosed it, that area there, to your left of your deck, and then obviously Mr. Silva.
And then the exterior decks were also put in by the previous owner, not by Mr. Silva?
Right.
Okay, 'cause I think, I don't know if we're getting a little carried away here with what's inside the buildings, as much as, did he bring this upon himself, and I mean, he purchased something without going through due diligence, on whether or not it was up to code, and whether or not he had these variances, I mean, that's kinda what I think we need to look at more than whether or not the floor is.
This entire addition, or this entire portion of the building, there was a screened-in, three-season portion of it.
Yeah, I was remembering the floor.
The minute they tore it down, whatever non-conforming status it had went away.
Yeah.
And they turned it into completely interior living space throughout both floors, so theirs, and they also raised the height, so this whole thing doubled the house. So the interior has a lot to do with the variance in some respects, plus the access points, they changed the access points, there was not a door over here, that was enabled by the fact of expanding the house, that then created this need for this larger deck from their purposes, something different could have been done that would have been perhaps within convenience, without a variance, same thing with this deck, this deck spans the entire length of the house, it could have gone the other direction and complied with zoning, the deck in the back, we don't really have the history on that, but it looks like there were, a door punched out there, then heads to the back deck, which also has to do with the interior improvements.
Was the previous owner who's not here, the friend who sold it, is what I just wondered.
Yeah, and you could look at the record of the.
Well, if the previous owner came over here with all these things here, we wouldn't have even looked at it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the previous owner did all this, really illegally, dumped it to somebody, and now that somebody has come in front of us, and we gotta, wants to approve, sight unseen, all these things.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I don't, personally, right now, I don't think it should be approved. I'll say it before we get to a vote.
We wanna, we wanna try to take care of it, but they gotta meet us halfway.
I don't know, I just feel like, the friend selling it, it's not really an excuse for us to change the code of this residential area through the zoning, I don't know, that's just my thoughts right now.
We can get into the deliberative portion.
I know, I just feel like, asking what, the electrical code itself is getting a little too much away from our purview, is what I'm just afraid we're getting into, and I realize we asked them to go and do that stuff and then come back, and I don't know, I just feel like it's, we're stepping.
I really thought the question was not so much electrical, and that was part of it, but it was more related to whether anything more would need to be done to the physical building, particularly on the exterior, which might increase the variance request, if the...
So if we were to approve this, is it gonna open up a?
Yeah, is there other work that needs to be done, to bring those decks into code that would then?
No, no.
Okay, again, that's what, you didn't do anything in writing, and that's what you were supposed to do.
No, no one sent to put it in writing, I would have put it in writing, no one sent, they had to be said, can complete the investigation and come and talk about it, 'cause I'm.
Okay, I don't want to argue the point.
We spent hours there, so we didn't want to have to produce.
You're an attorney, I'm sure you do everything in writing, that's how we work.
You know, going back to, you're talking about the house itself, this is, this is the envelope, because you're allowed to build it, this empty area.
Yeah.
Everything is outside.
Even the existing structure, the original house.
I mean, this been going on since, I have my recollection, about 1964.
When the house was built, it wasn't a 50-foot setback, it was a 30-foot.
Okay, so then it was changed, but not taken into account this particular property, which is a very difficult site.
Yeah, but all the properties in the neighborhood are similar, there's actually a lot of properties in town, just like that.
Between the topography and the actual wetlands, and that is where the restriction is coming from, in that, so, you know, that is, that is part of the consideration.
Consideration of what?
Of when we look at the granting, whether or not of a variance, I mean, is it within, right, the comprehensive zoning plan and the historic use of the property itself, that it was always a residence, it's still a residence? Now, the newer zoning laws, shall we say, when the setbacks then reduced, right?
That's not a hardship.
I'm sorry?
That's not a, basis for hardship. Reduced setbacks that change aren't, is not a.
No, I understand, but topography and soil conditions and wetlands have been found previously to when it then causes some type of restriction on the usability, or the non-conformance, shall we say.
Yeah, topography, topography's not an issue on this lot, wetlands potentially could be made a case in the front, but you're not even, you're not even having a problem with that, you're not changing the line there, and the soils, I mean, the soils obviously have no bearing.
No, they're just, those are all variances, those are all.
Can I ask a question, based on the survey map you were just holding up? Do you know where the septic system is on this property?
Yes, it's running right through here.
Is it showing on the map, or no?
No.
Okay, do you know the distance from the addition that was put on to the septic system? In the deck?
You know what size it is, do you know?
No idea.
Do you know what the weight is?
No, no.
One, one, let's, let him answer one question at a time, so from.
It's in here somewhere.
Somewhere in there.
Okay, but you're not sure?
No, I mean, the way the landwalk looks there, it's completely dead flat, whereas it's sloping off to the side, so one would say that's more than likely.
And where's the tank itself? Because you said that that's been pumped.
But in my one conversation with the health department, he said, the first thing you should do is score yourselves away with P and Z.
Oh, I understand that.
Make you do other things, in reference to the septic system itself.
But, in that regard, it would be nice to know whether the existing system is capable of supporting what you're proposing us to do, or not, or whether it's gonna lead to a whole other.
It's somewhere on that line where that swing set location is, so like, in, you know, just behind the mark.
Okay.
In the, in the pink area.
Okay.
And where's the wetlands?
Let's let Dominic ask his question.
In the spirit of cooperating, in the spirit of moving ahead, okay, I would expect it, as a professional, and this has nothing to do against you, but going inside the house, checking all these things out, including the septic and all that, and coming back to us with some kind of a written report of all the things you found, so that we could look at it and move ahead.
You asked me, you went to the house, measured the house to make sure what spaces were there, no one mentioned anything about septic or anything else, we would be more than happy to do it if you people had asked us to.
It's not our job to ask, it's you, you gotta do the report.
Yeah, but we're trying to take this one step at a time, what's the sense of Mr. Silva wasting, spending all that money, if for some reason you guys just turn around and say, sorry, Mr. Silva, take your house down.
That's not a good argument, I cannot buy that. He bought something, sight unseen, actually, he should go back to the owner, there's certain legality that he could get his money back, but in moving ahead to fix this for the town, because we are trying to fix it for the town, is that we need some justification to go forward, so, give us something that we could move on, that's all we're asking.
Well, I think we did give you, like I say, and this is no disrespect, it's, you asked for exterior photos, we got the exterior floors, you asked for a floor plan drawing, you asked for the architect to check all structural members, and you said, would you be confident in putting your stamp on that structure? And he said, I'll let you know once I investigate it. He went and investigated, we spent, I, four or five hours, and he's confident in putting a stamp on it, structurally, now he's not an electrician, we have to get an electrical inspector in there, sure to, to check the, you know, the wiring and everything, but we did agree that that was not part of today's presentation.
I don't mean to be argumentative, but I have my notes from the last meeting, the things that were asked of you were floor plan, both floors, pictures of inside and rear access, and a preliminary architectural assessment.
Okay, so the only thing you're missing is what, the interior photos?
Well, they're missing the interior photos, and again, your preliminary architect assessment wouldn't, wouldn't have been just you coming here and just saying a few things, it would have been an actual analysis.
Well, I don't know, I mean, he's been doing this for 55 years.
I know, but we have a record.
No, I'm just saying, I'm saying, if he felt that that was what an assessment.
That's your choice.
Rule of thumb, he would have done it.
That's your choice, and that's the record is out the use.
Anybody have any additional questions?
Well, I was wondering about that rear deck, that rear deck is, doesn't have a step to go down, I mean, it's just a deck, it doesn't have access out to the ground, right?
It is, so that, as you can see, this is the back of it.
Yeah.
So, you know, the timber, the lumber is obviously older, because it's very moisture, but coming down part, it just shoots, oh, I'm sorry, it shoots right through here, so this was all existing back, and this is the back little stoop, which brings you into that back door in the kitchen.
So it wraps around and comes down, down the side?
Right down here, yes, correct, two steps, and then it's almost like a platform ramp up to another, it looks like another step, one more rising.
Is that the, what's labeled as landing down the whole right side of the house?
Yes, correct, right, east side of the house.
So you're saying that that predates the other deckwork?
I, yes.
Because it's obviously looks like it.
Yeah, you can, you know, you can just tell by the condition of the.
Because that was listed as one of the things we had to approve as a variance.
Yeah, that's because that's not in the assessment record.
Listen, if it was a pre-existing thing, and they weren't expanding it, why?
There's no, yeah, there was no record of that existing.
Oh, okay.
If you look at the assessor record, all you had was the old house, there was no decks, there was the screened-in porch and the front steps, which are, were here.
And what we're being asked to is to give a approval to each one of these violations, every one of them, as separated out.
Yeah, you have all, this is a variance, all this portion of deck, this is the setback line here. This portion of the house was taken down to the ground and was rebuilt as a two-story addition, and this portion is in the setback, plus it raised the height of it from what it was originally.
Yeah, that would be where the original ridge line was, this would be this structure, and we could tell by the old pictures, you know, this being the original house, this is the new one. Maybe three feet, I mean, you know, all what it did was take the ridge line just straight across, not the original ridge line.
Either way, it's a variance.
Well, no, I understand, I just explained it to Ms. Collins, because she's not, she's trying to envision it.
This is, this deck was totally added, you can see the staircase, that was the old staircase, and so this portion of the deck is in the setback, this is not, this is in, this is, would be a compliant area, and it could have, like I said, instead of that, it could have gone here.
Could have made a smaller deck.
Well, it could have been smaller, or it could have been that large, but it could have been all compliant in this area. The other is, there is also a possibility that you could have done a staircase with a landing to the door, that also would have complied, because we do have some divisions for stairways to. that also would've complied, because we do have some provisions for stairways to extend six feet out from the, uh, from the setback line.
Mm-hmm.
So that could've been compliant. And then this stuff is, you know, again, in question as to whether it was pre-existing or not. And then the last variance is the overall coverage. In this district, there is a, I think it's a fifteen percent coverage. So by adding all these additional structures, and they've exceeded the coverage.
Do you have any idea where the wetland line is?
Yeah, the wellens is off property, it's back here. The wellens is over here.
Oh, it's close to the street.
Oh, yeah, the wetlands, yeah.
This is really woods.
Back to your earlier-
Yeah.
This is really woods, this, there's no road here. It's a paper street.
The, the road kind of answered the driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just kind of goes into the-
Dirt road that goes all the way through, I mean, we're, uh, two, two residents, or you know, three total on that whole road.
This lot-
As we see, the frame now says, as shown as tax assessors, the frame residence says what, nineteen fifty-eight, nineteen sixty-six there, and the screen porch is as shown on the assessors' view of part of eighty-six, eighteen.
Yeah, this lot came from a culmination of several lots. It, it put these four lots together to create one. And you see the building that was, I mean, this is a very non-scaled built, uh, map, but it, it took these four old, real, real old lots, that before subdivision, before zoning, um, put them together to make the one lot.
All right, anybody else have any questions? Any else you wish to add?
No, I think between this evening and the previous meeting, I, I mean, I, I know that you weren't obviously at the last meeting, but I think you're, you know, between the minutes and everything.
Yep.
Um, as you see, I mean, it, it, and it's at this moment, um, and as Mr. Silver's always tried before, he enlisted us to help him, uh, he's, he's been making the efforts, you know, to come down to town and trying to resolve this. How can we resolve it? That's the ultimate question, what will take, and, and I know he's, he's expressed, and in the numerous meetings we've had with Mr. Agresta in his office, uh, you know, we've, uh, Mr. Silver's tried to impress that, you know, he is willing, um, to do what is necessary, obviously, to, to bring this up to conformity, to get it off the books as a non-conforming structure, um, you know, obviously, especially with the two children, and, and be a viable taxpayer to the town, because, you know, he enjoys the schools for his children. And, and in the end, um, you know, whatever, obviously, the board finds that is, if it's possible to, to continue with this and figure out the next steps with the building department, the housing department, and what they feel is necessary to get these actual permits and get a certificate of occupancy, that's the ultimate goal in, in the resolution that would be designed here. You know, other than that, um, you know, I, I know, I know that there's a lot to do here between the two, three feet on the ridge line, the lock coverage, various, uh, decks, structures, but in, in the end, it's a package, and, and we'd like to try to get as much of that package approved, and, and that's the ultimate goal here. Other than that, I think we thank you all for your time. And obviously, we're always open to, if you have any additional follow-up questions or more information needed, we'd be more than happy to provide it to you.
I'm, I'm not sure that any additional information is gonna be warranted at this point. Does anybody feel differently? Okay. Thank you. We'll close the hearing. I assume, presum- presuming there's no one in the audience that wishes to be heard on this matter. All right, seeing none, we'll close the hearing.
In favor or against?
It remains to be seen. So, um, I'm torn as to whether I, I wanna participate in this. You guys spent, you know, you, all, all five members that sat for that original hearing and spent a couple hours or more of your time are here again tonight. So I'm inclined to, I know Mr. Condon and Mr. Pinto were seated, uh, uh, and the other regular members that are here were seated, so, um, so I'm inclined to allow the five members that heard at the original vote deliberate on this. Having said that, I would, my only sense of it is, kind of, for me, I, I don't, I'm not so concerned about the, how the ownership came to pass on this thing. My, I guess I would look at it this way, that if none of this had happened yet, and he came before us to get a variance for all of this before it was done, how would, how would we look at that? You know, that's, so that's, that's how I would frame the discussion from my perspective. Uh, I, I agree, I don't wanna get lost in the weeds on the who said what, or who did this, or who did that. If, if this were the old house, and they were proposing to do all this right now, how, how would we come down on that? And that's the only thing I'll say, but I'm gonna, uh, let the, the five members that were here and spent a fair amount of your time listening to this in, in March, um, deliberate on that. So I will yield the floor to Mr., well, Mr. Sorocco. We're kind of going out of order, we can do the minutes later, but since we're deliberating this-
Sure, I'll, I'll let Mr. Sorocco take the- I have a, I mean, I'd like to start with the one that I think is the simplest, which is the decks. I mean, to me, personally, I think that's a no-brainer, those decks gotta come down. I mean, they can't be in compliance, you've heard. Well, I'd say those could easily be in compliance if they did it right. I mean, my opinion would be that, you know, approve the variance on those decks, because they could be put in compliance. Um, you know, to me, the big issue is, you know, his friend, who he conveniently forgot his name, who bought the house for seventy thousand, put ninety thousand in, then sold it for eighty thousand, you know, three months later. Um, yeah, I mean, I don't know if you guys wanna take it on the whole basis or point by point, but if we're gonna start point by point, I think the decks have to come down and be, you know, my opinion would be for them to be knocked down and put in the code.
I agree. I don't think the, uh, I think the decks are more or less off the table, I mean, so much. I can understand us discussing the other things and maybe trying to pass the raising of the roof and the turning the screen porch into a addition, but, I mean, the, it's just, it's too much, and there's no reason why you can't live in a house without three decks on the side. So I don't think there's justification that the house becomes-
But even if you were, get away with the decks, he enclosed those areas, and as he said, when he expanded them, and he has-
Well, again, it wasn't him.
I don't care, that's self, that, that's a, you know, that's very questionable about really what the heck happened there. And so, uh, the fact that he didn't get any inspections or anything of that nature, that's his own problem. That's a self-induced hardship. I, I really, I can't see giving him a waiver at all, because I, I don't think he has a hardship except one that he took upon himself. And we are only supposed to grant it under a hardship. Where is the hardship except a self-induced hardship?
Yeah, or being taken advantage of, best case scenario.
Well, this question, was it taken advantage of because he's an immigrant, he didn't know? Or are they pulling a fast one on us? I mean, I don't know which way to move it.
Exactly, it's cloudy.
I almost feel the same way, what you just said. Uh, but my question is, if we decline it, what, what are we, what is the town liable for? And what are we supposed, what's gonna happen to the property?
I believe we-
The town's not liable for anything.
No?
We didn't issue any permits, they didn't ask for any permits. How could we be liable?
Okay.
So what does the town do?
Well, he'll continue to be in violation until he rectifies the violations, which means he would have to restore it. Or it could go into default, and the town would, if it goes to citation and to whatever, eventually the town would issue a lien. And, you know, I assume if he goes into default, stop paying taxes. So between the lien and not paying taxes, it goes into that, that world. Or you find some other solution that appeases it, somebody.
Let's say, a far-fetched thing, we approved it, then the septic tank doesn't meet the number of bedrooms and all that stuff, how does, how does he rectify that?
Well, I would suggest, to the extent that you endorse or approve any portion of this, that you make a conditional upon them going and getting the building permits and getting the health. If he doesn't have those, your variances actually don't matter anyway, so.
Yeah, he would have, it's, it's possible that they may need to replace the septic system, or enlarge the septic system, because there's more bedrooms now. They don't know the answer to that yet. Um, but, you know, if they don't do that, if, if, if you were to approve everything, he still needs to go back and get the building permits for it. He can't get that unless all the other agencies are on board to, to, to perhaps beef up the septic system, or maybe, maybe adequate or maybe not, but if not, he's gonna, they'd have to do the improvement, and they wouldn't get the building permit to do it.
He can't necessarily even improve or expand the septic system, because I'm sure there's not public water there, there's a well on that property. And how close, where the heck is his well? It's such a small piece of property. How close can he come, can't come close to well?
Yeah, those are definitely gonna be issues, and he may have also compromised the septic system because the physical work they did out in the yard, I mean, where the septic system's been reworked, the whole area's been reworked.
Is there a reason why they failed to tell us where the location of the septic is, you think? Or they just-
No, they didn't, well, they didn't map it, but I, I, as I showed on the, if I can find that map.
They kind of know where it generally is, but they don't-
If you look at the driveway, we did have some photos, and you look this way, it's up in here, it's all mounded up in here. And it's all, the photos we had back when we took the photos of this, it was, there was no grass cover or anything, it was rocky soil. So it had been, it had been manipulated.
Looks like the well's on the other side, though?
Yeah, the well's on the right side.
Okay.
So just, as a suggestion, I think it would make sense to separate the issues from the, the decks, because you've got a lot of coverage related to the decks, you've got setbacks related to the decks, and then you've got the replacement of the screen porch to new house, essentially. So it may make sense to kind of parse those out to see if it's a, a, because it doesn't sound like you're inclined to approve the variances related to the decks. And it's, so it's gonna be an across-the-board no, or it's gonna be a parcel, part, part, parcel, approval, partial denial? I don't know where you're going.
I think the decks, I think we're using agreement on, that's my take despite the questions we've been asking, but I think maybe we should take a vote just on the decks and then go with the next variance. I think that's, I think that's a good way to do it.
I, I would be inclined to take your suggestion, as far as, um, give him a conditional that he meets all the requirements of all the-
Oh, I wasn't suggesting that, I was just saying that if he gets any kind of approval, that was what would have to follow next. I wasn't suggesting one way or the other, whether it should be approved or not, I was just saying, in the event it is approved, those are the steps we would have to take.
Is anyone with a motion one way or the other for any part of the variance?
I would make a motion to deny the whole damn thing.
Anybody second? Second? All in favor?
Who's second?
Okay, was there a second?
He's second.
Somebody on-
I did.
Oh, Robert.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Uh, who, who we, uh, who's in line to vote for this?
I'm suggesting that it would be the, the original vote, it would be Bob, Marion, Dominic, Ryan, and Mike. You, you were the five that were sitting back in March, if you're comfortable forming the trigger on this.
I go along with the motion.
Yeah, I go along with it.
What was that? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear them.
Just take a vote.
So who's the A's, if you want to know, who, who's the A? I'm the A.
All in favor?
All in favor.
How the most?
Of the motion to deny the whole thing.
Hey.
It's four.
And you're a no?
I'll be a no, yeah.
Okay.
Four to one.
And, and the reasoning why is this a self-induced hardship is, there is no hardship except what was created?
Um, okay, that's fine, that's done. Um, what they can do in the future is they can go back and work with the building department, figure out what they're gonna pull back, whatever, resolve, they could potentially come back, ask for something smaller or less, make a different case, put that new information.
But at least they'll have the information at that point, instead of-
Yeah, I mean, those are their options.
Right. Show nothing, and, oh, here's a plan, no, we asked for a heck of a lot more than a plan, you know, like, like you said, oh, it's just two playrooms, but now it's a kitchen, a bathroom, you know?
And that whole thing downstairs.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
And he had said that there's no plumbing work done.
Right, I asked him, I said, "There's no plumbing work done, it has no effect on the, um, the septic and full bathroom," so.
Well, it's actually the number of bedrooms that dictate the, the size of the septic.
Right, but I mean, it's the fact that-
So there's, there's that nice whole mess of it?
That's what I know. Yeah, so, um, going forward, they can come back with a lesser menu of stuff.
Right.
To, to see if that can resolve it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll go back to the minutes of April fourth, we have to deliberate, and that was last meeting. That was, who was here for that? That was me, Marion, Robert, Dominic, and Andrew. So all five of us are here that were at the April meeting. Does anybody have a, first of all, you guys had a chance to look at these minutes?
You sent it, of course, on the computer, so it's in there.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You make a motion, you think of minutes?
Okay, motion by Mr. Panichio, second by Ms. Callow. All those in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Post, the minutes of April fourth are approved. They're coming up to Jim. And, okay. All right, um, there being no other business, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.